Clerk, I'd like to call the number six, meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners to order this time, and recognize that we do have a quorum, and I'll ask Commissioner Sims to lead us in invocation, and Commissioner Burgher to lead our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray if you will. The Holy Father, we just thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We thank you for this beautiful day you have blessed us with. We ask that you would lead us and guide us as we go forth through our county commissioners' meeting, and help us to make wise decisions for our county. We pray for our country, pray for those who are at war, pray for peace, and we pray for all those who sacrificed their lives every day to keep us safe. Again, lead us and guide us. Give us safe travels back home. With these things, we pray in your most heavenly name. Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you please rise and join me at the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is discussion or adjustment approval of the agenda as presented with change here, please note. Motion to approve agenda with the addition of the Northern Middle School Utility Easement to the consent agenda and removal of closed session number two. So closed session number three will become closed session number two. Madam Clerk, if you'll keep it straight on that, that would be great. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, none. Motion carried. At this time, in our regularly scheduled meetings, we do have a ten-minute public comment period set aside, and just a reminder that comments are made to the entire board, not individual board members, and as we always remember, decorum and civility as this board is addressed, and appreciate your cooperation on that. And we do have seven speakers signed up, and so our timekeeper will allow two minutes per person. And the first person, could I please?
First person is Andrea Childers of Blackberry Lane, Rougemont.
First, I would like to thank Gordon Powell for coming to the Dominion Energy's MECC open house on Wednesday night. My name is Andrea Childers. As of Thanksgiving Day, I will have lived in Person County thirty-one years. My own ten-acre slice of paradise is located less than a half a mile from the proposed Dominion Energy Storage Facility. My children are Person County natives. This is the only home they have ever known. Mr. Powell's wife taught my daughter kindergarten. I have worked for Person County Schools and PCC. I have logged enough volunteer hours in our school to be able to retire. I have given this county my heart, my energy, and my time trying to make it a better place. In return, my county has destroyed me with the news that they are going to build a fossil fuel storage site right next to my ten-acre slice of paradise. I come here tonight to you to submit to the board a list of questions to be answered before we allow Dominion Energy to build the Mariah Energy Center. I would also like to present to you a petition with the names of county residents who are asking to please slow down this process. Let's take a breath. Let's find answers to these questions before we move forward. I also come here as a Person County individual resident, only acting for myself when I present you with a report from the Sierra Club, Dominion Energy, Pollute to Profit. I implore you to do your due diligence before you rezone. All of this for a negligible amount of tax dollars of twenty million dollars over twenty-five years. Person County's annual budget for 2023 is ninety-three million, six hundred eight thousand, six dollars. If you do that math, it is a yearly increase of zero point eight five percent. That is less than one percent a year to destroy our homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Send it to Mr. Sims.
Thank you.
Mr. Sims, Mr. Curry, Mr. Palmer, this is on behalf of Person County citizens. This article is on behalf of myself. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Clayton, Helena Mariah Road, Rougemont.
Hi, my name is Chris Clayton. I live on the Helena Mariah Road. I've lived there for about eleven years now. Originally from northern Durham, I moved to Rougemont, looking for a great place for me and my son to live in quiet and peace. And I feel like, well, that's not going to last much longer. I got a lot invested in it. I'm a single father. Just looking for just the right answer. Hopefully I'll make it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Susan Jacques of Wachemee Road, Timberlake.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Susan Jacques, and I've been a resident of Person County for thirty-three years. During that thirty-three years' time, I also owned a couple of small businesses in Durham and was part of an Economic Development Board in Durham. So I have some understanding of the importance of economic development in a county and in a city. We moved out here. I get really nervous when I see myself on camera, so y'all forgive me. I'm gonna try to just look at you guys. But we moved out here because we wanted rural, and we wanted trees, and we wanted fresh air. Honestly, if this MECC site were there thirty-three years ago, we would not have bought our house. We would not have moved out here. I believe that this is going to be harmful to the economic development of Person County. I would encourage all of us to ask if the benefits of this facility are worth the trade, the risks that we're facing as a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Don Norinski of Summer Place Farm Road, Timberlake.
Good evening. My name is Don Norinski with my daughter's family. My wife and I have a small farm of about fifty-five acres in Timberlake. I appreciate this opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners with my concerns about the proposed MEC, especially because I've sent multiple emails to all five of you with no real response of any value in answering my basic questions. So hopefully I can quickly read my email. "I'm a constituent of yours from Timberlake. I've been aware of the MEC, Liquid Frack Natural Gas Facility that will be storing over twenty-five million gallons of gas on over four hundred acres of farmland and wetland. I'm greatly concerned about the impact of such a massive facility in our rural area in terms of noise, light, air pollution, as well as on the groundwater and the wells. There is, of course, safety concerns as to leaks, fires, and explosions, which can and have happened to other such facilities. And I'm asking the question that's already been asked, of what benefit is this project to the people of Person County? Dominion has admitted there will only be twelve full-time positions once the faculty is built and operating. You heard about the commercial tax revenue. None of the stored gas will be delivered to citizens here in the county." That was on their website as well. "Also concerning to me is the lack of transparency in the way this was rushed through the Economic Development Commission with no public comment or disclosure. I probably don't have enough time, but I do have a question of when was this first discussed with Dominion? Their website says they started their development and discussions in January of 2022. There was an article on the Economic Commission's website that stated on September eighth that this discussion was going on for several months. My question is, how long has any Person County official been dealing with Dominion before the news came out in the Roxborough paper on August thirty-first? If anybody can answer, or are you allowed to answer during this period? You can't. Okay. I think people would like to know how long this has gone on before any public disclosure. And lastly, there's been articles in the paper where some of the commissioners and Mr. Allen, the Chair of the Economic Commission, has said that Person County welcomes this site and this project. I don't think that the citizens of Person County are welcoming a hundred and fifty thousand pounds, tons, excuse me, a hundred and fifty tons of pollutants in the air, even if there is no accidents. I don't think they're going to welcome the tanker trucks going down Helena Mariah Road or Red Mountain Road, too narrow and curvy roads that are prone for accidents. So that's what I have to say. I think it's a terrible, ill-advised project.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Sabrina Varrier of Oxford Road, Roxborough.
Good evening. How are you all tonight? I've spoken to you all before about Person County Department of Social Services and the reform that needs to happen. And first, I want to thank you all for taking the time to discuss the issue and put it on and really pay attention to the words that we've been saying. And just as we go on tonight, I wanted to put a few things fresh in your mind. So this month is National Adoption Month, and Person County has posted on their social media, Person County DSS has posted on their social media about National Adoption Month and how supportive they are of it. However, when I asked them to support me to adopt, they turned me to a private agency. I came to the county to try and adopt children that were hard to place in other families, sibling groups, three kids at one time, and Person County turned me over and said, "We cannot help you. You need to find a public agency." But to my surprise, this week and last week, early in the week, they've been posting about the exact place that I was asking them to help me adopt from. So are they really doing what they say they want to do? Are they just sitting there and putting things up to make it look good? So I hope you all have a great evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Liz Bratcher of Estate Road.
I just want to say I'm grateful that you're talking about the restructuring today. I think it's something that needs to be done. A few years back, PJ Gentry was placed as the BOC appointee to the DSS Board, and at that time, she toured DSS and met with several people within the agency. After her meetings, she began to receive phone calls from employees who wanted to meet. There were so many that wanted to meet, she asked me to help because they all wanted to meet in anonymity. So I met with these people. I met them at night and during the day, and I met them in various inconspicuous locations so that they were not seen. And their stories were sad. They talked about an unprofessional climate. They talked about nepotism. They talked about a lack of protocol, minimal employee mentorship, bullying, and consistent position turnover, which she discussed already. It was an agency that seemed, or seemed at the time, chaotic. There was little respect for the responsibility of the position, and assistance money was given without proper due process and case research, and that was said several times to me. It appeared from all these discussions it was a toxic environment. Commissioner Gentry spent months on reviewing and researching this issue, and I recall when she introduced her findings, she presented a restructuring scenario, which I hope you'll look at today. And so I ask you to really think about it seriously. And finally, with regard to the former DSS childcare case currently going to court and out of DSS hands, I would like to remind the Board, the guardian ad litem on that case did not agree with the placement of those children back to the mother. And I remind the Board, the DSS attorney in this case sought eighteen continuances over the four-and-a-half-year period. To date, I've received another call from a county resident who has brought forth a similar case with a similar judge and a similar attorney. So I think this is tip of the iceberg, and more and more is going to be coming out. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have George O'Neill of Chambers Loop Road.
I don't need all two minutes, but thanks for y'all's time. Thanks for everybody's comments. I'm a farmer in Person County. I also just want to not beg y'all, but, you know, make the right decision for Person County. We could be known for a lot of awesome things, but the dumping ground for Raleigh's pollution is not what we should be known for. We could do so many awesome things, and this is the energy of the past, and we aren't thinking about the future. So please just consider that as you make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you all for your very informative and cordial public comments, and we do as a board appreciate all of those. Item number one on our agenda is discussion, adjustment, and approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. New business, item number two, presentation by Thomas Wallenberg, resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans in Person County. So, oh, there you are. I lost you in the crowd. Welcome, sir.
No worries. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So each year, we come together as a nation on Veterans Day to honor and celebrate the hundreds and thousands of brave Americans who have served our country in uniform. Now more than ever, our veterans need our support. In times when our country is divided on so many issues, we can agree that those individuals who have risked everything to protect our country and our way of life deserve our support and gratitude. This is why the Person County Veterans Council is requesting the Person County Board of Commissioners join your colleagues across the nation in supporting Operation Green Light for veterans, an initiative to shine light on the service of veterans and their families. As part of Operation Green Light, the county and the city of Roxborough has eliminated their buildings in recognition to our veteran community that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. Though the proclamation here tonight, we are asking that the citizens and businesses of Person County join this initiative by changing one light bulb in their home or entryway from tonight, November sixth, 2023, until November twelfth, 2023, to thank veterans and their families for their sacrifice and service to this great nation. Chairman Powell has pinned the following resolution, and we're asking for the Board's support. Resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans, whereas the residents of Person County have utmost respect, appreciation, and gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and our community in the U.S. Armed Forces and believe these service members should be granted specific recognition, and whereas the contribution and sacrifices made by those who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and Person County seeks to honor these individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in various civic, religious, and community organizations, as well as through civil service and by volunteering at various community-based events, and whereas members of the Person County Veterans Council assist Person County veterans by serving as liaison with the community and coordinating services and activities that benefit and honor local veterans and their families, and solicit information and provide updates about activities honoring veterans in our community, and whereas Person County recognizes the necessity and value of employing a dedicated veteran services officer whose role includes aiding and advocating for local veterans by helping them navigate the complexities of veteran-specific benefits, resources, and programs, and assuring they receive the benefits and assistance they deserve, and whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated twenty percent of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and active-duty service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during the first year after military service, and whereas of 2022, forty percent of transitioning service members stationed at bases throughout North Carolina decided to stay in North Carolina upon their transition to civilian life, and fifty-five percent of service members retiring from the military with twenty-plus years of service also made the decision to stay in North Carolina, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to participate in Operation Green Light for Veterans 2023 by shining green lights throughout their communities to let local veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported, and therefore be it resolved that having officially been designated a Green Light for Veterans County, Person County hereby declares now through November twelfth, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform, and therefore be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light 2023, the Person County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens and businesses to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve our freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November sixth, 2023, through November twelfth, 2023. Adopted the sixth day of November 2023 by the Person County Board of Commissioners, signed Gordon Powell, Chairman, Michelle Solomon, Clerk to the Board. We are asking that the Board of Commissioners adopt this resolution supporting our veterans. We have some of our servicemen and women in the audience with us. We are asking for your support for this resolution.
Okay, gentlemen, we've all heard that resolution, well-read, well-said, and we're very proud of our veterans in Person County, and we want to fully support you in such a small way as a green light. Not very hard on our part. But again, we're very, very proud. If we would not be here tonight... If we would not be here tonight to have meetings like this if it were not for people like you, men and women that are willing to sacrifice not only their time, but their family as well, and take their families with them to even far lands. But your service is much appreciated. And I think this is well said and well stated. We did the same thing last year, but this is a new year. Things have changed. We need to emphasize it this year more than ever, and we do appreciate it. I don't know if anybody has any comments or thoughts? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
No motion to approve.
Any discussion? You're none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Thank you. And... You seem to be the men of the hour here. So item number three is presentation by Mr. Wallenberg again. Person County Prepare Mass Notification System.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So on November 1st, Person County launched a new mass notification system. Emergency Services has partnered with a company called Rave Mobile Safety, who's a leader in mass notification and incident management services for organizations and public safety agencies. They collaborate during emergencies to help organizations work better together and help spread information. We launched Person County Prepare to replace what was the Code RED system, if you're familiar with the Code RED system. The reason that we're making this transition to Person County Prepare is it gives us more functionality than we had with the previous system. So the goal here is to use this to communicate with county residents and businesses. Registered users will have access to emergency alerts from Person County, including public safety and emergency-related warnings, time-sensitive notifications, and widespread infrastructure disruptions. This is a free service to the citizens. There's no cost for them to receive these messages. They can receive these messages either in real time as text messages, emails, voice messages, whatever option that they choose to receive these messages, all three if they want, again, at no cost to them, though data rates may apply depending on their cellphone plan if they're using a cellphone. And this is not just open to county residents. It's anybody who lives, works, travels through, has an interest in Person County. Anybody can sign up for this information if they want it. It is our intention, both myself and the Public Information Officer, is our intention not to use this except for when it's really needed. We don't want people to be getting a bunch of messages and then kind of get annoyed by it and turn it off. So the goal is only to use this when we have critical information that needs to be sent out to individuals. The county will also be using this notification system for our county employees. So if there is something going on that we immediately need to reach out to all of our county employees, we have this system to do this versus, you know, trying to phone call people and send emails and all that. We can immediately touch all of our employees through this system. So it gives us some other functionality as well. Again, this is kind of how it works. The other thing is that there is a desktop function as well for county employees. Not only could they get this on their phones, we can actually trigger it so it pops up on their desktop as well if they're sitting at a computer. So they will get the information that they need. The website is there. We have a QR code. Again, we started publicly advertising this on November 1st. We just wanted to make the commissioners aware that this was rolling out. If anybody in the county needs assistance, they don't have a computer, needs assistance for registering for the system, the library staff is on board to help citizens with the computers at the library to get registered. And again, in all of the public information we've put out, there's also a number that citizens can call in, and we will help get them registered as well. So at this time, really, there's no action required of the board. This is just informational. Are there any questions for me at this time?
I have one question. So is this replacing Code RED?
It is replacing Code RED, yes, sir.
So anyone that had Code RED, let it go, and then you sign up for this?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
And at a previous meeting, you had brought this up, I believe, at maybe at our budget discussion, that you were not able to Code RED being its own entity. You were unable to get the numbers that we already had in Code RED and integrate that into this. So we're starting over fresh?
Yes, sir. There's some proprietary issues there that they would not release all of that information to us. So really, yes, we are starting fresh. And so the PIO and myself have put together a pretty robust public information campaign that we're going to be rolling out through November and December to try to get our numbers up, to get people engaged.
My only ask is just a progress report of how many people we have signed up for. If there's anything else that we can better do to implement awareness of it.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just go to that website?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That website, we also have a QR code that we're sending out with all of our public information that people can just click on the QR code and get there that way as well.
Any other questions? Board members' comments?
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, please.
Commissioners and public might be interested to know that several years ago, the General Assembly passed or enacted a bill that provides that if and when a citizen or anyone provides their contact information for emergency notification purposes like this, that that personal contact information for that purpose is not a public record. The county will not be disclosing that information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Okay, moving on then to item number four, presentation by Mrs. Wallenberg again, Division of Community Risk Reduction.
So again, this is an informational item. There's really no action required from the board at this time. Let's see if my slide's still up. So with the leaving of the previous fire marshal, met with the county manager, and we sort of discussed some restructuring options. And so within the Department of Emergency Services, we've created a new division, and that is the Division of Community Risk Reduction. So within the Department of Emergency Services, we now have these three divisions in the office. So we have the Office of Emergency Management, Division of Emergency Medical Services, Division of Emergency Health Communications, and now the Division of Community Risk Reduction. Part of this restructuring is to get us more targeted towards addressing the risks that exist within the community. Your traditional sort of, if you think, fire marshal program really is really focused on enforcement and inspection. So that's really kind of what that focuses on. NFPA 1300, which is a code that we follow, it's the National Fire Protection Association, basically looks at community risk reduction as a more targeted approach at looking at risks that are in your community and coming up with a plan to address those specific risks. So it takes sort of that model of what we've seen with fire prevention over the years, and really sort of targets that, but it's not just based on fire. It's based on all risks within the community. So and the fire prevention model's been very successful. If you look at fire prevention over the years, it has significantly reduced the number of fires, right? So how do we take that same concept, that same model, and apply it to other risks that are in the community? And so that's where the Division of Community Risk Reduction. Some people have asked me, "Is this some harebrained thing that I came up with my own?" No, this is actually a national model that's being followed by a lot of progressive agencies across the country. So it really is a collaborative approach. It involves everyone in the community. And basically, the first step is creating a community risk assessment. And in that community risk assessment, we really target what are the specific risks within the community. That being said, every CRR program looks different because it's based on the needs of that specific community. So one size doesn't fit all. So once we identify those risks, we then prioritize those risks, and then we develop strategies and tactics to mitigate those risks. And then we just follow that whole sort of PDSA cycle and work our way through that. What's working, we measure it, define our outcomes, and then refine the process as we need to go. So and so one of the questions that also has come up since we started doing this is, "Does this mean we don't have a fire marshal anymore?" No, we still have a fire marshal. That position still exists. The focus here is, again, making a more targeted approach to what it is that we're trying to do. So there are five Es, what we call the five Es to community risk reduction. There are education, so obviously, that's educating the public, educating government, educating businesses on things that they can do to reduce risk. Engineering is really looking at things that we're doing, whether that be new buildings, new infrastructure. How can we engineer those things to be safer and reduce risks? Obviously, there's still an enforcement piece, whether that be through ordinance, through the Board, or other enforcement actions that need to be taken. Economic incentive is a piece of this. If we can create economic incentives to have people perform safer behaviors, then there's a benefit to that because there's a cost savings on the backend. And of course, part and parcel to any CRR program is obviously emergency response, which is still a large part of what we do. So like I said, it's really taking this and creating a more targeted response. Fire prevention over the years, we've thrown a lot of things at the dartboard. Some have stuck, some haven't. It's really how do we really evaluate the risks in our community and then develop strategies for that? So next steps are really doing that work to create that risk assessment. That will probably involve some information coming to and from the board as we do that. It's also, one of the next steps is, again, working with the county manager and finance is filling that deputy fire marshal role so that we can get that role filled as well. That role is currently vacant. So those are some of the next steps as we move forward. The one thing that I did want to introduce, Sean. This is Division Chief Sean Bratcher. Some of you may know Sean. Sean came on October 23, I believe. And so Sean is the new Division Chief for Community Risk Reduction. He is still the fire marshal. He's been vetted by OSFM. But because of the way the department is structured, it made more sense to make him the Division Chief because that matches everything else that goes on in the department. So you'll be seeing Sean around.
Welcome, Sean.
Any, again, no action needed. It's just informational. Any questions for me?
I do have one huge concern. It's been noted before, as I sit right here in this chair, that every time I go out of my door, walking my dog, there's a good likelihood that I'm going to run into a dog running loose. So... And from my experience, I hate to throw somebody under the bus, my issues were never resolved. I mean, you're talking about a big dog attacking a 12-pound dog, pit bull, versus... Dog was impounded for 10 days. Gets a second chance. That is no way to live in a community.
Yes, sir.
And I would love to have that addressed and make it stricter penalties for removal of such dangerous animals.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions, comments, other board members?
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate what you and your department do for our services.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number five is Options for Organization and Governance of Human Services Agencies. Manager Kathy.
Good evening, Board. Upon your request, I'm bringing this item back for further discussion. At your last meeting, we had a presentation from Dr. Christine Nicodem with the School of Government, and she shared information regarding various organizational and governance structures for human services agencies within North Carolina. So within your agenda packet, I have included an outline of various structures that could be considered within Person County Government. There is a summary chart. And on the attachment following the agenda abstract on page two, you see Option A, which is our current model. There are a couple of organizational structures that the board could consider based on feedback that I've received and ongoing discussions. There is some interest in the Board of Commissioners becoming more involved in the governance structure of the Social Services Department and possibly the Health Department. There are a couple of different ways you could go about doing that. One would be the Board of Commissioners could assume the duties of the Social Services Board and/or the Health Board. And in those cases, the directors would report to you as the governing board for those departments. The employees would stay subject to the State Human Resources Act in that case. Another option would be to create a consolidated human services agency. And that would need to include at least two human services functions. And we have discussed that veteran services falls within the human services functions for Person County. You could potentially consider a consolidated human services agency with social services and veteran services. It could also include the Health Department. If the Board of Commissioners were the governing body for a consolidated human services agency, then you could assume that role. You would not need to appoint a separate advisory board unless the Health Department was included. And then you would need to appoint an advisory board for Health. But under that structure, then the county manager would serve as the appointing authority for the directors of those respective departments in consultation with the Board of Commissioners as the governing board. So that is one option that you can consider. And then the other option for consideration is to do a consolidated human services agency with a fully, a board that's fully appointed by the Board of Commissioners. So you can designate that appointed board to have governance over the department. And again, I would, the county manager role is still involved there with the director's reporting, or the Consolidated Human Services Agency Director reporting to the county manager. And in the consolidated agency, the employees would no longer be subject to the State Human Resources Act. So these are a variety of different organizational structures that we have been looking at over the last few weeks following the presentation from the School of Government. I do want to note that if the board were to decide to move forward with any of these options, the first two being assuming the responsibilities of either the DSS Board or the Consolidated Human Services Board. There would need to be a public hearing held with at least 30 days' notice in order for the board to assume those responsibilities. And then it's also advised that if you were to create a consolidated human services agency with an appointed board, that you still follow the process of conducting a public hearing before making the decision to do that, so that you can get feedback from the public. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have as you discuss these options further and decide how you'd like to proceed.
Open for questions, comments?
We have, we've talked earlier, and Catherine talked to you about this, and I know that what I was, the two that I was leaning towards is either A, the one, I'm not Option A, but we take where we are, the Board of Commissioners, Service, and DSS Board. And then if we do where we want to combine, then what department, you know, would we combine with? And then at that point, that option's okay, as long as it's not the Health. Because of the Health, then we have to, we have the Board, and we have to assemble with all the names and positions that you mentioned. So I'm looking at, either way, I think the, us as commissioners should, you know, serve as that DSS Board.
The commissioners can't solely be the board for DSS.
Yes, the commissioners can assume the responsibilities, the governance for social services.
Without including Health.
Right.
Pets, pets, anybody.
Right. So that's Option B in your handout, following the chart that was laid out by the School of Government. The Option B is separate A. The option B is separate agencies with partial Board of Commissioner govern, governance.
And if that route were taken, there would not be another board formed.
Right. So the commissioners would serve as the D S S board. The D S S director would report to the commissioners. The employees would report to the D S S director, who would maintain hiring and firing authority for the departmental employees, and they would all remain subject to the State Human Resources Act. The commissioners would be assuming the responsibilities for making the decisions that are associated with the D S S board.
Their position related to the state involvement there, what, to what extent does that clarify therefore, please? They're already paid by the county.
Right.
County employees, hired and under the Health Plan.
Right.
Everything, so.
Right.
But there is currently state jurisdiction.
There are human, well, are we talking specifically about the employees?
Yes, at this point, yes.
So when we discuss the employees, there is, they are subject to the State Human Resources Act, and the reason being that years ago, when the state, you know, the, the funding is coming from the federal and state level, and the state sought to ensure that all county D S Ss were following the fair, federal merit guidelines. So they made all of the employees of Social Services and the Health Department subject to the State Human Resources Act to ensure that, because they were receiving these federal funds, that they were following the federal merit principles. Over time, county policies, policies have evolved to very closely mirror the federal, I mean, they do abide by the federal merit guidelines and are actually very similar to the State Human Resources Act and the provisions of our personnel policies. But that is, those personnel policies govern the employment, for the most part, for Social Services and Health. There are still county policies that apply to them in terms of leave earning provisions and other policies that we have in place that might fill a gap of something that's not in place at the state level. And then the other way that we work through various channels with the state when it comes to helping Social Services employees is that the State Office of Human Resources oversees many of our kind of H R program areas for those two departments, so classification, compensation, recruitment and selection, employee relations. So they do have to approve, you know, any new positions that we implement, they have to approve our pay plan, they have to approve our job classifications, they have to review to ensure that the hires that we're making meet minimum criteria established for the positions. So these are services, you know, that our Human Resources Department provides for all county employees, so they generally are doing this as well already for Social Services and Health Department. And then we also, those directors both have access to consult with the state, and as do we, and we just ensure that the decisions that we're making at the county level also comply with what's in place at the state level for those employees.
I think we all have a major concern for our employees because they're the ones that make it, make it work, day in and day out. So I want to be sure that everybody understands that our goal is there to maintain, if this word come to fruition, maintain their status and ensure their webbing in the future. Any other board members?
Chairman Powell, yes, sir. What is the definition of S R H A? What does those letters stand for?
R H A in the context of this handout or the organization, the mental health organization that's located here in Roxboro? They're R H A. So is, is there something?
S H R A.
Okay, that's the State Human Resources Act.
What is that role?
Excuse me?
What's the role of the state Health?
The State Human Resources Act?
Right.
So it's the, what I just explained with the State Department of Human Resources, the, what they have to abide by, what we have to abide by at the county level for Health and Social Services is the State Human Resources Act, which is enacted by the state legislature to ensure that all, well, I mean, it applies to state employees, but it is also applied to Health and Social Services employees to ensure that the federal merit principles are followed in order for us to qualify for the federal funding that we receive for Social Services and Health programs. Our human resources policies internally, if they were reviewed, should be deemed compliant with the federal merit principles if you were to choose to move towards a consolidated human services agency. We already have the policies in place that would support that, and we would just have to have those reviewed.
So the employee essentially wouldn't lose any type of benefits, and we would still have funding through, to the state?
Yes. So the one main difference that we've identified as far as the State Human Resources Act and the grievance procedure that is, that is allowed for grieving serious disciplinary action, so that would be a disciplinary demotion, a disciplinary suspension, a dismissal. Employees who are under the State Human Resources Act would be able to appeal that decision to the department director who made the decision. And then beyond that, if they're not satisfied, could appeal to the Office of Administrative Hearings at the state level. I, I don't, I have the sense that that step is used very infrequently. I did reach out to the State Office of Human Resources to see if I could find out how many times it's been utilized over the past decade or so, but I don't have that information. But since I've been here, I'm not, you know, for the past three years, not aware that any of our employees have utilized that step in the grievance procedure. But that is the one difference because under our appeal procedure, the county manager would have the final decision, and there is not an appeal beyond that level. Again, it's, it's used very infrequently. I don't, you know, you know, how, how employees would feel that that would generally impact their employment status.
That statement is correct, that there's no appeal, so to speak, but the state constitution says the courts shall be open. So that's the avenue for review.
Yes, there's always the E O C and courts beyond the county manager. There are other ways to pursue an, an appeal or grievance. We just have the internal process to follow.
Right. So the employee certainly has avenues to protect his or her rights.
One more question?
Sure.
Upon adoption or implementation, what's the timeframe to begin a new process going forward?
Okay, so, I mean, the board can make...
I know they got to do a public meeting.
Right. So the board can make a decision following the public hearing, and we would just need to, to look at, you know, based upon what that decision is, you know, what is the, the advisable timeframe, you know, to make sure that we do this in a very thoughtful way.
Right.
And it just depends on what the board decides the option is that you want to pursue, because if you are going to appoint another board, there will be a timeline associated with that. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, there's, you know, that we're prepared to answer any questions that might come up or support, you know, through the process based upon whatever changes might be implemented as a result of this decision.
So if we have interest in making a change, either way we look at it, we're looking at least 30 days. So all you need is to say we have interest.
Okay.
That way, we put 30 days out there, so we have to have a public hearing regardless.
Right. So if you were to have a public hearing at a regular board meeting, the earliest you could do that is the January 2nd meeting, because the December meeting falls on the 4th, and that's already within the 30-day timeframe from tonight, unless you were to call another meeting in between that meeting and the January meeting. So you could decide tonight to have a public hearing on January 2nd. You could also make that decision at the November 20th meeting and still have time to give a 30-day notice to have it on January 2nd. That is the earliest that you could have that meeting or that public hearing.
Other comments?
How would we receive the information if the Board of County Commissioners took direct government authority over D S S? I know you mentioned several options, possibly having included, the report included in this meeting or having a completely separate meeting.
You could do either of those options. I have talked with other county managers whose boards handle that both ways. You can meet separately as the D S S board, or during your regular meetings, you can carve out a specific time to consider D S S matters, or just ensure that if there is a D S S matter that comes up, that you identify yourself as the D S S board when you're making a decision.
So we would have to close out the county commissioner meeting and then reconvene as D S S board, and then after we're done with D S S, reconvene as county commissioner?
I don't get the sense that that's the case, but we can verify. My understanding from the discussion...
Because you're dealing with two separate entities.
Well, you're the county commissioners operating as the D S S board. I don't know that it's considered two separate entities. I don't know how...
Yeah, it, it's not clear to me. I thought that the Board of Commissioners would have to formally adjourn the meeting and then reconvene as the separate board sitting as the D S S board. The minutes, what I believe to be true, without having yet done the research, or without the new county attorney soon doing the new research. What I believe to be true is that the Board of County Commissioners could just simply move to that agenda item, and under statutory authorization, then consider that item. The minutes, we just need to simply say that the board sitting as the board with authority with respect to Department of Social Services matters. Does A, B, C, I believe.
That was my understanding from discussions, but we could verify that specific, well, we would verify that specific point.
If we have a public hearing, you would have a more, I guess, 100% understanding about a point for us to consider.
Oh, sure.
A member of our law firm will certainly figure that out.
So there's really no use in choosing an option tonight then?
Well, you'll want to stay for the public hearing, the matter to be considered.
I would recommend that if the board wishes to proceed down one of these paths, that you select one of these options.
One or two, I'm sorry.
Well, it could possibly be two. Then I would suggest you possibly have two public hearings.
Let's go back to one.
On two options.
Would it be reasonable to say the public hearing is to discuss or to receive feedback on B or D, for example?
I think it would probably work, I think it's cleaner if you select a specific option. If there's more than one, then to keep the comments separate, you have more than one public hearing, but whatever the board wishes.
Yeah, what are your wishes? Going for, you want to identify one or have two options there? And if you want to do one, which one?
I like option C.
Option C, does that involve any consolidation with the Health Board?
So option C can be approached in two ways. Option C is a consolidated human services agency with an appointed consolidated human services governing board. So if you were to appoint, if you were to make a consolidated human services agency that included Social Services and another agency that was not the Health Department, then the commissioners are appointing a consolidated human services board.
Yes.
It does not have to include the specific health-related positions because you would still have a separate Health Board, and the Health Department would continue to report to the Health Board. But you would appoint a board that would be responsible for the governance of the consolidated human services agency. The county manager would then supervise the consolidated human services director, who would be over, you know, that would be incorporating at least two human services functions, be D S S and Veteran Services, D S S Transportation, you know, those are the ones that we've mainly identified as being current county departments who would fall under that umbrella.
All right, is a minimum or maximum?
And, I'm sorry, and the other option under option C would be to, you would not have the Health Board anymore, you would have the consolidated human services board, and you would have D S S and Health Department reporting to that board, and it would include the Health designated positions.
All right, say that one more?
Okay, sorry, let me get some water.
Okay, take your time.
It's, the first one that's presented on option C. You have the full consolidated human services board, it includes all the statutorily designated positions for the Health Department or Health Board. The county manager supervises the consolidated human services agency director, and you have D S S and Health and/or any other human services functions within that department.
So that's the first one on the left, that's option C A. I'm going to call it C A, because the other option to the right is C B, which does not include the Health Board, correct?
Right.
And so the county commissioners would not directly govern.
Right.
And that could be, if we chose Veteran Services or, and D S S under that, the county commissioners would appoint every member to that board? And is there a minimum or maximum?
There's a maximum of 25 on the human services, consolidated human services board. I'd have to verify the minimum number.
So you have C. I believe, mention upon was referring to option C B when you said option?
I was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looking on the wrong side of my page.
So my question is, which one of these options where we do not have to have a board, a committee, or, or select a board?
So if the, so if the Board of Commissioners functions as the governing board, that's either option B or option D. As long as the Health Department is not, yeah. I mean, because if you create a consolidated human services agency, and it included the Health Department, and the Board of Commissioners is the governing, then you would still need to report, still need to appoint a Health Advisory Board. You would still have, the commissioners would still have governance, but there would be a Health Advisory Board.
Over all that, would that necessitate a new position?
Not necessarily. I mean, we could reorganize within our current staffing.
Me personally, I don't want to consolidate the Health with the D S S. I want to keep that separate. And me personally, I'd like to see the, you know, that whichever way we can do just to have, to not have to appoint a board and worry about how many we got to have, this, how many that, or, you know, like maximum 25. I mean, I don't know what the minimum is, but that's, that's what I'm leaning towards.
I've, I'm along the same lines. I've not, have not had any desire or input that would lead me in that direction to include a Health Board, so I agree, we're moving forward with that.
You were referring to option D, which is direct, not, not appointing a board.
Not appointing board.
Not appointing board, and that would be D, correct?
I thought it was D B.
B or D, either one, would, is, these are the two options where the commissioners, the Board of Commissioners serves as the governing body. So it's either the model where social, it pretty much, it's very similar to what we have now. The Board of Commissioners serves as the Social Services Board. Social Services Director reports to the Board of Commissioners, acting as the D S S Board. They're still subject to the State Human Resources Act. Or option D is where you serve as the consolidated human services board, and you create a consolidated human services agency. create a Consolidated Human Services Agency that, if it does not include the Health Department, you do not have to appoint an advisory board. You serve as the governing body for the Consolidated Human Services Agency. The county manager has hiring and firing authority for the Consolidated Human Services Agency Director with the advice and consent of the Consolidated Human Services Board, which would be the Board of Commissioners. The Consolidated Human Services Agency Director reports to the county manager and appoints the agency staff with the approval of the county manager. Not subject to the State Human Resources Act unless you decide to keep them subject to the State Human Resources Act. It could, for purposes of this chart, I have depicted Social Services and Veteran Services staff.
It's the board's desire to go forward. It's not as easy as it may seem.
What she just, what she just read through me, that's, that would be, if we have to make a motion, that would be my motion to do that, what she was talking about. We're not consolidating, we're not establishing an advisory board. We are, we'd be the county commissioners, and then we would have Veteran Services.
You don't have to have Veteran Services, do you?
You have to have one other department in addition to Social Services. So Pats-
So if we-
Pats is the other human services agency within the county government.
So with Pats and DSS?
DSS and Pats.
Okay.
Either or is fine. We just need to-
Yeah, I mean, I guess our internal conversations have been around, including Veteran Services, as being the more kind of seamless approach to it. The working relationship between those departments making a whole lot of sense. And not that these other departments don't work together, but we haven't kind of fully vetted what that would look like to include Pats in this.
So my understanding is your motion would be consolidate DSS and Pats, where the Person County, this board, would be the direct governing body over those two consolidated boards.
And the employees would be appointed to the county. Is that correct?
So there would be a Consolidated Human Services Agency Director, and we would need to, the county manager would, with the advice and consent of the Consolidated Human Services Board, if that's the Board of Commissioners, would determine who that, who is designated as that Consolidated Human Services Agency Director. So that could be a newly created position and a new hire, or it could be one of the, the current director could also serve in that role. In some organizations, the Assistant County Manager is the Consolidated Human Services Agency Director, and those department heads report to the Assistant County Manager in that capacity. There are many, many ways that we could do this, and we've had, you know, we've floated around various things, but the ones that we've given the most serious consideration to were presented in the chart, you know, as far as having conversations with those department heads and what that would look like in the future.
Pats or Vets?
For Pats.
Pats, that's fine. So your motion for the public hearing needs to be what?
So that the-
Exactly. How do we make it short?
Do you want to throw something out, or do you want me to make a suggestion?
Public hearing on the proposal by the Board of County Commissioners, and are they discussing option D on the right side of the page? But eliminating Veterans Services in that box and substituting Person Area Transportation instead.
Yeah.
That-
And just to let you know, just for consideration purposes, right now Veteran Services is a standalone, you know, they, it's not considered a full department. It's a person, and that person reports to the Assistant County Manager. So in our conversations, we felt like it might be a good move to include that as part of a larger department in order to create an opportunity for more shared resources, more opportunities to provide backup to that person, being in a location where there's more staffing to support that position. So that had been part of our internal conversations.
I would be opposed to including Veteran Services.
Proper motion, I think, is for, to schedule a public hearing at the earliest possible date, to receive public comment on option D, but including Pats instead of Veterans Services. And the notice of public hearing, when it is, if and when it is sent, certainly could further describe the proposal under consideration that citizens would be commenting on.
Everybody clear on the motion? Does anyone want to make that motion?
I made the motion.
You made it. He said exactly what you wanted to say.
Exactly. He said exactly what I wanted to say.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. And now, Mr. Sims, would you?
Yes. I had, I had the privilege to attend the Veterans Ball at Antioch Church Road, Baptist Church, and I received an award on behalf of the county, because I was there. And so I would like for you, if you would present it to our board here today.
Disabled American Veterans Certificate of Appreciation, Person County Chapter 72, awarded to Person County Board of Commissioners. This certificate is awarded in sincere appreciation of your continued support of the disabled American veterans and its mission, fulfilling our promises to the men and women who served. As Derek said, this was done on the fourth day of November 2023. Signed Ronald K. F., Commander Philip S. Adjutant.
It's an honor to receive this on the House of County. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, veterans. Thank you. Okay. To that point, Madam Clerk, are we on schedule?
Yes, sir.
All right, hon. Okay. Couple of announcements here. One of my committee appointments and meetings was a meeting with Region Four, Biya Regional Health, and a very good meeting conducted last week. And it was, the main topic there was very similar to some of the things that are going on in Person County right now, which related to foster children's care, which I think everyone across our Biya Board, the Regional Board, the Full Board, as well as what we see in our community. We're suffering from a broken system. I mean, it's, we have issues, we have problems, and it's not, it's not local. It's statewide. How we solve those, we don't know. But that was the main topic from my point of view at the last meeting of Biya. And had the distinct honor and pleasure of being involved in the New Charters of Freedom monuments that are placed up here in Hoxansbury. This was a project that was presented to partially a formal board, probably maybe four or five years ago, but it never really materialized like it should. So when the gentleman by the name of Andy Perego asked me, maybe two years ago, now a year and a half ago, did I think it would be received well by this board? And I said, of course, and I don't see why we didn't do it previously. But anyway, we did get involved with, with that project, and it's, it's beautiful. Most of all, I think it's there for a long term. They even said 300 years, but I don't think I'll hang around and say that, say that celebration. But it's there for, as I mentioned, that particular day, two things stood out to me, and that is education. Take our children there, let them see those documents. And the other is for adults. Adults sometimes need reminding. Go by and take a look at that, those monuments and those precious documents related to our country, and what our country was founded on, and should, we should stand by that today. So that was, just, I was very impressed, very happy. We had lots of contributions by our business and industry and individuals, and the craftsmanship of that work, the work there is very commendable, and I do appreciate the, again, the contributions and the effort that was put forth, and the involvement of this board and what, what each, each board member did in support of. I've got something here I want to say, and it's in the form of a public announcement, I would say. I'd like to remind the citizens and the public of Person County that the landfill located in our county is owned and operated by Republic Services. And I reemphasize, the county does not control nor own the landfill. It is their private business, their private property, and we as a county and as a board and a manager have no control over their day-to-day operations. But just today, it came to my attention that citizens using the landfill as a drop-off of waste material, as they should, have become disrespectful to landfill employees. This type of behavior is unacceptable in any county business, and the landfill is no exception. Republic employees have been verbally abused and even threatened on their property. This behavior, again, in my opinion, is unacceptable. My plea is for the citizens of Person County to first, respect the landfill as any private business, and secondly, give Republic Services employees they respect, they deserve. Please abide by the rules and regulations at the landfill, and properly take advantage of the services offered there. Those conclude my comments. Manager York, where'd that come from? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My blunder for tonight, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We did receive word today that we have been issued all the permits that we've applied for, for the county farm park project. So our next step there will be to begin work on a BMP or a stormwater control measure there on the property. So we'll be releasing a request for proposals to do the construction of that part of the project. But we are glad to have gotten those notifications today and to be able to proceed with that project.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sims?
Just to piggyback on what you were saying, Charters of Freedom is very special out there. We did the dedication. I want to thank Cal for leading us, and we did the National Anthem and acapella, and we nailed it.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
That would be as memorable as the monuments.
Yes, it was. And as I said earlier, the Veterans Ball attended that, and there were the veterans there, had a lot of members that they were recognized. But, you know, our veterans, veterans to me are so special, and we talked about today the green light. I hope all the citizens here will do that and to participate in that. And then lastly, the food truck rodeo that happened this past Sunday was a great event. We had 24 trucks that were up here in, you know, up here in Roxborough. And I've talked with some other people, and when you sit there, and they say, you had 24 trucks in Roxborough, they were so surprised, you know, again, thinking little Roxborough, and you're not, where are you going to put 24 trucks? But anyway, we had a great turnout with that. Thank the URG and all those that helped make that successful. And it was a, it was a great day to be out and to visit the trucks. That's all that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Palmer?
I also attended the Charters of Freedom dedication ceremony. It was emotional. It's a great asset to this county. I'm very pleased to see it almost finished. It's just minus the glass covering, of course, the coating over the bricks. And I'd like to remind everyone who has not contributed, if you haven't contributed, there's still time. I did attend the Museum of Brick Dedication Ceremony Saturday morning. What a crowd. That was a great service there, and very moving, me being a veteran. And I got to stand by a fellow veteran who's a captain with the Inspection Department, Mr. Dan Lawrence. And that was just, I don't know, I love going to that. I missed the parade. I was working that morning. But anyway, those two activities were my highlights of last week.
Commissioner Perry?
Just to echo about the Charters of Freedom ceremony, it was a very moving ceremony, and I appreciate everyone's hard work that went into that. Also, the brick dedication at the museum, there was a large crowd there, and so happy to be there and be a part of that experience. And finally, I'd like to thank the staff of the county for putting on their trick-or-treat event. And this is my first time taking my little boy upstairs and downstairs to do inspections. EMS had one. I couldn't make it to EMS, but I appreciate the public service you do for the kids in Halloween.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight and voicing their opinions. Green light for them. That's all they're asking. They're asking you just to change a simple light bulb to show support. And that's, that's the least we could do for some of these guys that lay, you know, they lay their life on the line for us so we can have these kind of meetings. And some do not come home. So the least we could do is change a light bulb. I'm grateful we had a packed house. I hope we have a packed house for this public hearing. DSS is a huge part of this county, and I actually look forward to the public hearing, to hear what everyone has to say.
And thank you. And I'll revert back. I attended this, the event Saturday, and it was, yeah, it was touching.
I tried to catch you before you walked off.
But it was very good, good day, good event, with a lot of people there. It was well-attended and well-done. And commend the museum staff for putting that on. That, that site, that corner of the block there is very impressive, and fully and totally encourage our citizens, young and old, to go by and take a look at what's going on there, because they're doing an outstanding job. No further comments. We, I need a motion to go into closed session per General Statute 143, 318, 11A5, and those attended to, those to be, to attend, County Manager Catherine Cathy, Clerk to the Board Michelle Solomon, County Attorney Ellis Henkins, Finance Director Amy Wernberg, PCC President Dr. Pamela Senegal, and PCC Foundation Board of Directors, Directors Member Philip Allen. So do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to motion.
End of discussion. If you're none, motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's none, motion carried. We don't, do we need a bat? Do we need a bout?